Morning, it's August 12th, 8:00 AM. I'm gonna do a planning board work session. First up on our list is Ironhorn Facilities. Oh, no?
Yeah.
Be great.
We sent in some revised plans and responses to the account writer. And wondering if there have been any questions.
When looking at it, can you define, you've got like a mesh fence? And a picket fence?
So it's a, it's a standard chain link fence around the perimeter. With the exception of the front, frontage between the building and the southern property line. Where we're gonna go with more decorative wrought iron type fence.
Can you just define that on the drawing? Where are those?
Oh. Yeah, I guess it could be a little more clear. It's a proposal adjusting three rail.
Which arms out?
That's the second one.
So on D2, Note 4 says fencing facing road will be black powder coated chain link mesh.
No, that's what I got left over from last time. Sorry about that. Yeah, proposed gate to adjust it. So the entire front will be.
Sorry, frontage, okay, yeah. Okay.
You got us cut sheets for that ones too?
Sure.
Yeah. On Atlas's website. What was it?
Let me to us.
Yeah.
Talk a little bit about the rooftop unit screening. It's shown but it's not defined.
Yeah, we're not sure what to use there. So we're, do you guys have any preferences? Do you? I would assume it's probably gonna be some sort of aluminum of some sort. You know, or steel, cordial steel, something like that.
You don't have any idea proposing to use?
No.
I mean, we can look at some other projects that have done exactly that. Maybe give you some options that have gone through and been approved.
Good.
But most times, I mean, talk to your, I can't, I can't lie here.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys, I didn't know if you guys had something that you, you know, seen and like, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
It's not a big deal to us. It's more a matter of getting, getting something on there that works for everybody.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
But I would assume, I'm assuming it's gonna be some sort of a low maintenance, not wood?
No, definitely not wood. I'm trying to, is it just a ballasted kind of mechanical screen? That's up there.
What's that?
Just a ballasted mechanical screen?
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna wanna anchor into the roof. I'm assuming there's gonna be legs on it if I put some weight on it.
Right.
Yeah, so this sits on there. And I'm not an architect, so I don't know if there's anything that's, you know, pre-bashed, pre-made.
Yeah, that's, I think, who is your architect on this? Is there one?
Maybe I'm.
But your sentence right before that said, "I'm not an architect."
I mean, we'll, we'll do per, we'll do per time, but we're not architects. We're not, I was like.
So I would just say, so, you know, do some research, make a selection. I think Eric could probably pull what Hidden Level used. Yeah, I mean, Hidden Level's probably a good one, you know. Get some product out on those. It's just kind of basis of design.
Yeah.
I know.
I mean, we're, like I said, we can find something, but you guys have said, find something that says, hey, this looks great, you know. Here's a, you know, here's what somebody else used, consider this.
Yeah, it'd be easy to pull that product out of.
Yep.
I can say that along, it's kind of just a basic basis of design. Material storage. Where is that happening on site?
Uh, inside the building. With the exception of some staging between the ramp and to the west where we've got a cask pad there. And I don't know if anybody here has ever been to like the kitchen by the car seat. Everything is pretty much inside the warehouses. Sheet rocks, insulation, metal studs, and drop ceiling for ironed bottoms. So they may stage some stuff out here just to, you know, load out the trucks.
No, no long-term outdoor storage?
No, not that I know of. No, we talked about that being a staging area and just wanted concrete opposed to asphalt, this building stuff.
Yeah, 'cause we just, if, if there is going to be any longer term other than, hey, we pulled it out of the building, the trucks coming this afternoon, it's gonna sit there for a while, like. We'd want it to find that on site where it's applicable.
Yeah.
You know, so at this point, with nothing being shown, the assumption and our understanding is that there will be no outdoor long-term storage.
Yeah, that's my assumption too. But that we're told that was mainly for staging during the day. Cause you'll get, you'll get trucks coming in, you'll get them stacking stuff up, getting ready, loaded on trucks. That's for stuff, so. You guys have like three, four crane trucks where everything gets on and.
Right.
And add the stuff that they sell, like can't sit outside, wet.
Jeff, if you're not, would you mind just muting yourself? Parking count. Can you kind of walk us through how you arrived at your counts?
We, there's certain areas that, so essentially the office area, we assumed is the front half of the building. And the, and the back half. So from that demising wall, there's a, the demising walls actually, keep going, right there. Everything from there to the left, we consider office. And then the rest of it is warehouse.
So the square footage you had on the plan for like the breakdowns was, is correct? Is that correct?
Yes. And we just take that as a gross square footage, it's like, the top of the walls.
So we're short on parking?
We show full parking and we're asking for banking in the front. So I'm seeing 35 for the office, which gets you 5,250 square feet of office. And then I look at the floor plans and it's saying 6,000 square feet of office plus 2,000 square feet of showroom. Of 8,000. Well, but, but like I said, we're, their, their square footage for office is different. Cause they're including the portions that are part of warehouse. There's some storerooms, there's bathrooms in the warehouse there. And it's all storage. So everything in that warehouse is pretty much stored except for, except bathrooms. Just zoom out a sec.
So that square footage is not correct?
It there's, it's just the way they differ to the calculate. That's storage. Uh, that's just a hallway, hallway, men's room, men's locker room, storage and storage. So we're considering this as part of warehouse.
And then the showroom is up front?
Up left. The, the showroom is this here, basically. This is a small like retail area where they sell like oddball tools, that sort of stuff that goes, goes along with, with what they sell. So you might, you might walk in there and buy Sanders for drywall or trowels and that sort of stuff. But it's more ancillary, it's their business.
So how many square feet of office are there?
So it would be 150 times 30. That's a little, it's like a little less. Cause then we wait till we round it up. So somewhere around. Around five thousand. Which is the.
Can you call that out on the plan please? Like the square footage of office?
Sure. That's 41 times 1.7.
Yeah, I think we just wanna clearly define, I think Eric was struggling with, the drawing wasn't printed to the right scale, so he'll label like actually maybe.
Yeah, I tried to measure it on the, the floor plan, but it wasn't the scale.
So I think you.
Yeah, you could just call out the square footage of office and warehouse.
Yeah, so what we used. Yeah, so we used the dimensions on the actual survey. Which I believe, so it's 41 times 1.7. That's the outside perimeter of that office.
Okay, so just put that in your parking table so we know
Okay.
exactly what's going on.
So the survey is not signed? Or stamped?
Probably did an email, we're hands updated it. So I give you updated time stamping at this point.
And then just so we don't get in the same situation where you have to bring a signed plan. I see you have your stamp on there. But I think it was for whatever project we had you run around at the last minute, they had a meeting to get us the signed one.
Yeah.
So we just get ahead of that?
Sure.
Okay. That's everything we had, common wise? Yeah, the, the lighting, the existing parking lot lighting. Do you have cut sheets of that?
I don't. I know it's right now it's kind of tilted up like at like fifteen degrees.
Yeah, some of the wall packs look tilted up.
Yeah, we're gonna drop those down. They're not open late, so it's really there for security purposes. And I'm okay with the shutting off like the back ones here. I'd like to be these here cause they do have their truck parked there and that sort of thing. But it doesn't look like there's an awful lot of light hidden out of there. There's like three of these packs outside the building. And the front is more decorative than anything.
Signage under a separate application, you said?
Yes, like if they're, if they're still working on that or what.
Okay. Landscaping, just because we've been in this a lot. The mulch, is that gonna be stone mulch or hardened mulch?
Band some disposable. I can find out. I gotta put stone mulch in there.
So I guess lately we've been, if you are doing stone mulch, two to three inch size, just so it's not small little hells getting around it.
No, we had a few that crossed through windows.
And it's also very limited use. Like we don't, we're not approving stone mulch holistically on the site. It's very pointed, limited use. So bank was three to four, but I thought you said.
You can call that out of the plan.
Four is, four is kind of big. I, I, two to three, three, three inch size of stone mulch. Four is, is big. We call it out, we'll put it in our detail.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna write it down. Agreed, yeah, that's just for there.
Okay. The, the fence around the generator, that's just existing and staying the same?
Yeah, yeah, they were.
And we heard that the gate is moving? Can you show us where that's moving?
Oh, yeah, so I, I think, I assumed it was gonna be right in the front there. It's gonna go into the back corner. It's gonna be off the, instead of being, instead of being here, it'll be here. And that's just a couple of last minute changes I made like about an hour after we. That, and the, and the ramp, instead of having a blast spot, they prefer it just goes straight down.
Is that a swing gate or a slide gate?
Slide gate. Uh, we, we showed a swing gate and it's mentioned to me a sliding 24 foot gate. 30 foot gate. Same with.
Okay. And you still removing this asphalt by the break area?
No, they, they wanna keep that. They're gonna put some picnic tables out there for break area and floorings and stuff.
How big of trucks are coming up to the site?
They will be 18 movers. Um, for, and those are mainly for delivering to the site. And coming off the site, they're smaller. Uh, I don't know the exact length of beds, but they're, they're decent sized, but they're not truck trailers. They're, they're flatbed moving, they're cranks.
Can you show us turning movements of circulation on site?
I can. Yep, they, they did have 18 movers coming on site before. They're, they're able to turn. You'll see like in that bottom part, there's a little gravel area that they need to be able to fully maneuver. But they, they are, they, they were able to always get these movers in there. And they basically come in, they go towards the back. That's why I forgot those parking spaces. Move them and then they come back in. And then they just pull straight up. Right through if you really want to go further.
Yeah, we're generally asking a lot of these, certainly the industrial sites provide that.
That's mostly what I have.
Okay. How quick can you clean this all up and?
The way you gave us square footage on the party.
Pick your table. Can you get to the?
The screening, turn movements for trucks and mulch.
And remove that note that the chain link faces the road.
Yeah, yeah, clarify.
Yeah, clear note four there.
Sure. I mean, that's pretty straightforward if you, if you did it today, if you try to get it today.
Yeah, maybe we.
We'll just get it figured out more later.
Okay, this is, this is on for next meeting, correct?
It's not on for anything right now.
It's not on for anything.
Right, when we get new plans that we didn't, it's not for next meeting and it finishes right in you.
And the deadline for next meeting is this Thursday.
Thursday.
So we need to.
We need to question.
Get us everything right again.
Yeah, not a problem. Definitely that to you too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Jeff, you're on, on the clock.
Good morning, everyone. Rob Seeley from EDR. We've got Ryan Worth and Jeff Bolter and Cliff Pelton on also from Saab. Jim Middle from In Architects and Court Wilson from CBD. I think that's everyone from our team. Nathan, I don't, do you want us to run through the, the last set of changes? Or do you just wanna jump to your questions or?
No. Update us on last set of changes and then we'll talk about some comments that we have.
Okay. So going back to the, let's see, the July 31st responses. So there were some comments on the SWIP, which we've addressed. We got the signatures in there for the certification forms. We got the ship all letter and all effect. We've submitted the E and T documentation. The outlet pipe, Mark commented that the outlet pipe didn't have any slope. And we just commented that that was intentional based on the volume that we had to retain in the, in the pond. And we didn't wanna encroach on the wetlands. So the pipe, discharge pipe was intentionally flat.
Mark, you're, is that good by you?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's much they can do with it given the grades that they have to work with. But I mean, that, that, you know, will, will become a maintenance issue likely. They are bringing some sediment in there.
Yeah, I mean, there shouldn't be, there shouldn't be a lot of time when that's discharging, hopefully. But, but yeah, that's, that's the best we could do with the grades. It's very, very flat sided, as you know. We, we added the force main and the gas mains to the plans. Mark, you had asked for details on the check valve and gate valve. Those were integral to the grinder pump. Yesterday Doug indicated he'd like another set of valves in the right of way. Doug, do you, I assume you want those in a vault?
They don't have to be. I mean, you know, either way, either way is fine, Rob, whatever works for you.
Cause the check valve, I mean, the, you know, the gate valve, we could put a curb box on it. But the, the check valve, I don't think you want that to be buried, do you?
Okay, that was fine. Or I mean, uh.
Put it in a little vault.
Vault is fine, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be anything, labor it.
Right, right. So we'll, we'll have those details ready today. Note about coordinating with WEP for the connection, we added that note. I think, I think that was all the comments last time. And then, and the last week Eric sent us a couple of new comments from, I think they're just engineering comments. Question about the buyer retention area from Mark. That's a filtration area. So we will, we will label that on the detail. And then we'll add the specifications for the buyer retention media, which is a mix of, this is the DOT blend of topsoil, sand and compost. So we'll add that to the detail. We talked about the check valves, we'll add those. And there were some comments on the lighting. Argus has updated the, the photometric plan and the cut sheets. And I sent those to Mark and Eric last night. So those comments have, have been addressed. So the, regarding the wetlands, as you know, we had submitted the jurisdictional determination. Waiting to hear back on that. We're, we're confident it's gonna come back as, as positive. So we've done a delineation, we've submitted that as well. And we are in the process of pulling together the joint permit application. And that will be going out hopefully later this week. So that's all in motion. So we're not, we're not proposing any direct wetland impacts. We do have some buffer impacts, cause pretty much the entire parking lot on the east side of the building is in the, in the buffer. Always has been, so. So we'll need a permit for that. And I think that brings us up to date. Jim, did you wanna add anything about the building? I know we submitted some roof materials.
Yeah, the, we've, the decision has been made to completely replace the roof that's there. It'll be receiving a new insulated panel and then, and then a standard Butler MR24 standing seam roof. The color will be either what's there now, which is the unfinished metal or it'll be gray, will not be the black. The exterior siding, we are going over the exterior siding with a new metal panel. A morsing panel and there'll be a couple tones of, there'll be a darker, almost black and a lighter gray tone to the building. Just basically following the, the rendering that you have.
So what is the roof color?
The roof color will be either the, the natural metal that's there now or a very light shade of gray. Either way, it'll, it'll be, it'll appear as a gray roof.
Sorry, you said that it would be an insulated metal panel and then you're putting a, a.
No, no, it's a system. Basically, we tear off everything that's there and, and the, the bat insulation that's in there now. We go on with a new insulation panel that goes with a, a new, a new frame right on top of the girts. These panels go down. There are some additional clips and, and girts that get attached. And then on top of that, we put a metal, we put a metal roof on top of it all. So we receive, you know, we, we end up with a minimum R30 continuous insulation on the roof and a brand new metal panel on top.
This is like a re-cover then?
It's a total removal and a totally new roof system, yes.
Well, I think it's, I think it's good that the wall panels are also getting upgraded because your, your roof thickness is gonna increase. And now you can, you can properly dress that edge where they need.
Yeah, and again, and we're adding gutters to the project now. There'll also be some snow guards on, on the roof, so.
Are the current elevations, is that still current or do you need any updates on there?
I think what you have submitted is, is other than designating areas of color. But we could, yeah, so this is, this is essentially what we're, what we're providing. Yeah, and I think, you know, we actually have some updated elevations that I can get into. I can get the Rob to get to you later today. But, but no, nothing drastically changed, just some notes and information. So essentially reskinning the whole building. The existing, the split face block will get painted and we'll have, we'll have essentially a new building here.
Okay. Doug, Jenny, Kathy's still here. Randy, Kevin, any comments on architecture?
The, the only other thing that I, I remember from previous discussions is really right there in that rendering. That in the foreground is some sort of screening to, to screen some new mechanical equipment. Is that still the case? Okay.
That's, that's still the case.
And that, and that equipment is, is well screened height-wise?
Uh, yes, yes, this will be, this, what we're showing here is, is, is a 10-foot screen.
What is, sorry, what is that material? What's the construction of that screening? Is that a louvered system?
Yeah, it's, it's a steel or aluminum fence system, but just with a horizontal louver or a horizontal panel.
Like a horizontal fin going around?
And that's what you fin, a horizontal slat.
Site-wise, some of the. Lots of questions, so we have our comments on parking. You wanna, Doug? Parking counts.
Eric, Eric, I think we have talked about that, about the parking counts. And we're thinking they're okay. Just wanna confirm with the board that everyone's on board with that. They had presented some, because and, and let me know if I'm saying this right. But because there is some training going on and there's the classrooms, that when the bigger area, we're really treating sort of as just adjacent to the, to the training and not really a separate use. And it's a large area, but from a parking standpoint, it should not affect anything. Does everyone know what I'm saying? Makes sense or?
Is that area kind of on the right next to the question?
Right.
Go back to the site plan.
Is that a comment that you did in the drawings or will it be in your resolution?
We'll put it, we'll put it in the resolution for, with the finding.
So future situations like that, so just.
Right.
Uh, just that bottom right. Corner of the parking tilt down. That's all existing. Put down another two drawings or something. He's gone. And one more. Alright, so in here. Don't have the fence any longer, right?
Correct.
So it's just, it's open use? For anybody?
It's all, it's all open and straight, yep. And that was a result of our negotiations with Aqua, they they wouldn't allow any fencing within the easement. Now, it's just all open lot, as of today.
I delineated it as where it was previously behind the fence.
Correct, there's, there's nothing designated in reserve like it was, even so.
That was the parking lot, naturally.
Yeah. Yeah, that whole right side used to be behind this fence, cause we have, uh.
Yeah, that was gonna be the training area eventually.
Right. But it's not, not designated that way any longer, it still may be used that way, but it's not designated that way.
Yeah, there, yep, there's no. No fencing or signage or anything back there.
So the fence ends at this corner or it continues up?
No, it's up, but it ends at the corner of the building, it's gonna be pan back up.
So Aqua was okay with it being in here?
No, that's not fence, that's just the clearing, contact on that line.
So the fence ends here?
No. Pan back up to the building corner. See, the fence comes down around the. The trading area. And then turns into the corner of the building.
Is he where, up top, uh, there you go, just to the left, yeah.
Yep, right there, and goes to the left.
Yeah, the fence, there's a gate there. And then it returns straight up to the corner right there.
Yep.
Goes there and then goes up and goes around the building in the other direction.
Yep. You can see that light line there, that's the, that's the west edge of the easement. There along there, near the edge of the parking lot.
I think what he's, what he's referring to is you have a note.
The note's thrown in there, yeah.
Oh, yep. Good catch. Hey, we'll delete that.
Okay. Um, the stone mulch. I think the board prefers a two to three inch.
Yeah.
As opposed to the one to two.
Okay.
And you just clarify exactly where this is being used? Is it just those two little islands?
Uh, it's in that island right there. Yep, yep, those two, yep.
And nowhere else?
Um, Cliff, did you want it in the bed along the face of the building or did you want wood mulch in there?
As well. Everything should match.
Okay, so so it would be right in that plant bed as well.
Yeah, I think we need the, the delineation of where it is located.
That dash line is the bed line, it's a spade cut edge, so it would be.
Yeah, but just. Have a simple call out the extent of where the stone mulch is.
Okay.
Being used. Um, we tend to only really approve it in a very limited quantity. So clearly define where it's being used. Is this stone curb granite?
Yes.
Can you call it out as granite, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
I noticed in the, the DOT specs, stone doesn't necessarily meet grant for them. So anywhere that it says stone curb, call it out as granite curb.
Okay.
And you have a couple places where there's rip rap at the outlets of the swells and such. I believe the board would prefer turf reinforcement mat.
Okay.
And where you're using the stone mulch, please call out the size.
You do have the size in the detail?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, two to three inch.
Yeah, we can add that to the plan as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
So we still have to review the lighting plan, we haven't had a chance yet since last night.
Yeah.
Oh, you haven't. Um. Just had, uh. The fence specs, did you move to a different design of fence?
Yeah, we went to a, a different type of ornamental fence. Just based on cost, honestly.
Do you have a cut sheet?
Um, yeah, so we can get a cut sheet.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's, that detail is right from the manufacturer.
If you can on the drawings, call out a basis of design, provide the cut sheets and information, but call out a basis of design.
Yes.
And Nate, it's gonna be very similar, if not exact, to what's being used over at TTM.
Okay.
Looks familiar.
Yeah, just, you know, documented on the, on the drawings. Okay. Alright, so.
So the timeline.
Permit, you wanna talk about that at all? Is there anything to talk about really? Split timeline, same thing.
Yeah, I mean, once we get. Everything taken care of, I'm not sure that thing, that's gonna happen by Thursday, but.
So the deadline for the next, next planning board meeting is this Thursday. If we don't have materials by three thirty on Thursday, then you'll be on for the one after that. So the, the next deadline after this Thursday is the twenty eighth of August. That would put you on the September eleventh planning board meeting.
Is it possible for us to come this week and and bring these changes with us? Get a vote this week?
Uh, not, not this week, by the time you give materials and they have an opportunity to kind of cycle it through the office, we're not gonna have time for this, this week. That deadline would have been two weeks ago.
If you can, if you can make all the updates and address Mark's comments and. The comments you got today and everything, um, get us final plans by this Thursday, then you'd be on the next agenda.
Do we need to send the lighting plan to DOT?
Yeah. Yeah.
A lighting plan, we probably have now, that's, we just got an updated one last night. But that, you could start rolling that out.
I could send it.
Yeah, we can send that to DOT.
Oh, you guys were Nate.
You don't anticipate any changes to the lighting plan, right?
No.
So we can get that off to DOT.
Yep.
Get that moving.
No, not, not as long as you guys are good with it, we're. We're really happy with it.
So take a look at it, let Eric know your plan, so that they can be prepared, one way or the other. Uh, but Eric, get the lighting plan off to DOT to keep that ball moving forward.
Can you wrap the DOT sign off on your SWIP on drainage plans?
No, we haven't submitted anything to DOT.
Okay, can you do that, please?
Yeah, we've, um, yeah, we've been talking to them, they, they're, they're aware of the project and they know it's coming.
Okay, we'd, we'd like to see something arising from them that they accept that.
Okay.
For drainage and lighting, we'll send them the lighting plan, but if you can send them whatever they need for drainage.
So even though we're not draining into the DOT right away, we still need them to sign off on that? Everything's contained on site.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, we're skipping through the county resolution.
I have no.
They asked if they want to see drainage too.
We'll ask, we'll ask DOT if they want to see drainage too, it's not in the county resolution, so maybe they didn't need it.
So I'll send the lighting plan to DOT and I'll ask if they wanna see anything for drainage, it was not in the county resolution, so if DOT doesn't wanna see it, then that's fine.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Um, where are we with capacity assurance from WEP?
Um, we've been talking to WEP and talking to Doug, so far, both are on board with it. Um, WEP just, uh. They're still going through their review, they, uh, they move at their own pace, but, um, we've been talking to them. It's actually the, the approver, um, he used to work for EDR, so we have a pretty good relationship with him. So there's, there's no concerns on their end, it's just a matter of processing.
Okay.
And they kind of keep deferring us back to the town because it's, it's, it's your force main until, I think until across this four and one.
You guys are okay with the, the concrete wall with the metal fence on top?
Can we talk about that?
Did we during the meeting? So this detail, oh, we did, no, we didn't.
We did before.
We talked about it before.
Break this, alright.
Um, this detail. Appreciate the intent. With those perforations, those six inch cutouts, we just wanna kind of make sure that. The opening area is sufficient for the drainage swell, that we're not gonna get. Yeah. For lack of a better term, build up on one side versus the other, I mean, hydrology, the balance on both sides, it's gonna be.
Yeah, we, we've confirmed that, that it'll, um.
It's a civil engineer, somebody that designed this?
Yeah, yep. So that, that allowed us to cut. I don't know, so a couple hundred feet off of the, off of the length of the fence.
Yeah, no, I think it's a, it's a reasonable solution, we just wanna make sure that it's designed and.
Yeah, it's been designed and, um, you know, the owner's aware that it'll, you know, that it was a maintenance to keep those holes clean.
I think he's missing a question. I never heard him commit to having somebody look at it.
I think he's saying, what he's saying is it's been designed that way.
For that way, okay.
Right, I mean, that's, that's what you're saying, that. Civil engineer, structural, whoever designed that.
Yeah.
The wall, designed it, the wall with the perforations, knowing that it's in a swell with. Potential water on both sides.
Yes. You can see the, uh, we showed the hundred year elevation on there, the dash line.
Okay.
So in the, you know, in typical, cut more common store, there would just be that lower row that would be along the water through.
Right. Should this be four hundred and six?
Oh, yeah, yep.
I think there was a.
A lot of water.
There was one spot on the, somewhere else on the site plan too, where it said five hundred. I don't remember off the top of my head, but there was one other spot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah, I'll, I'll look for that and.
Think it was.
Get those changed.
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Probably in the two hundred.
Find it, yeah.
Yeah, we'll find it.
Okay.
And edit that, thank you.
Yep. Okay, anything else? Alright, so take a look at those comments, let Eric know what your plan is. We'll go from there.
Yeah, we'll have things back in before Thursday.
Okay. Thanks, Rob, thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Alright, next up we have Sunoco. All right. Alright, this. Stuff you're gonna talk about today, or?
Yes.
Guess we have some stuff on here.
Yeah, the first directory.
Are there changes from what we got?
Yeah, this, these are markups for discussion today. The changes are proposed. Okay, uh, from the comment sheet, wanted more dimensions on the front. Elevations for the calculations, if you go to the bottom of this page. There I started doing the calculations of percentages that you wanted.
The, of the facade and the sign band?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Uh, the changes, everything that is in red is a change. From what was previously approved. So we're really just looking at the red. Issues. Uh, next page. And again, that was the, uh, the missing mark for the columns. That was one of your comments. And I will do the detail of the, uh, platform for the HVAC, it's gonna be basically square column. Square bean, flat plate. Uh, flooring, and then we'll be using the vinyl. Fencing that's being used for the dumpster.
So is the.
As the sidewalls.
What's mounted on the porch?
Well. The platform itself, we'll have, we have one column here, we have the platform, and this is the vinyl fence. Same style as was being used on the dumpster.
So the platform's eight feet above the sidewall, and then the fence is starting on the platform?
Starting on the platform, yes.
Of the, I don't think they're aware of that, so.
Well, this is, this is, I'm explaining.
Right, 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 right. Make sure they're.
So the other, the other issue is.
The eight back platform in the back of the building. This eight feet above.
It's like a floating, it's like a floating platform with a screen wall above it?
It's basically a platform, a square platform, eight feet off the ground. And the fence is sitting on the platform and the HVAC equipment is sitting on the platform.
So the wall supports the platform, there's columns under the platform.
There is one column.
We're gonna have to see it in plan, I think.
Yes, I've gotta do a sketch. And the other thing that we're gonna be doing is, this is vinyl, that's metal, we're going to be painting everything the same color as the siding.
Siding again, remind me?
It's, uh, the, it's the cement board.
So we're doing cement board. And what is the vinyl fence? I don't recall. Uh, dumpster enclosure is a vinyl fence, it's white vinyl. That was approved for the dumpster enclosure.
Yeah, it's, uh, L two.
Do you want to just pull that out, Julie, on the record?
Sorry. The same material, but not the same color for the mechanical enclosure?
Correct, the mechanical enclosure is gonna be the color of the building. The dumpster enclosure is gonna be basically its, its unfinished white vinyl.
What equipment is up on that?
That's a HVAC for the tenant two space, the tenant, um.
And and where I'm going and the reason I'm asking is typically if you have. Any sort of mechanically unit, it's got an intake on it, exhaust?
Yes.
So they generally require some decent space around the unit itself for clearance for air.
Yeah, we're looking at like a three feet clearance around the edge of it. Yeah, we're looking at like a three feet clearance around the entry.
And that's sufficient for the unit?
I will have to check that. The other alternative is if you want to be safe on that, then we can, instead of going with vinyl, we can go with a louvered screen all on the two sides.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of what we've been looking at for other mechanical screens. I'm, I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just saying make sure you look at it, because if they don't get enough air, you're, you're suffocating those pieces of equipment. And then you're putting a light on there?
It's underneath the platform, what we add was, if you look at the elevations, uh, up about three sheets. Yeah. Okay, if we, the next sheet, um. Basically, the lights along the back, there was a light that was here, and basically, uh, if you left it up here with this, this would be in dark. So that light moved down underneath the porch to provide the lighting of the door.
So that's going to be the same fixture as the wall packs?
Yeah, yeah, we're just going to move it down there.
So the photometric shows five wall packs on the back, you're still going to have five wall packs on the back, it just moved slightly.
Yeah.
It'll be on the wall or on the ceiling?
It'll be on the ceiling, ceiling of the porch.
So it's not a wall pack of that?
Well, actually, no, I mean, as a wall pack, it can be loaded on the siding, it'll give enough light in that area.
Yeah, because that, that details of new light on porch ceiling.
So, okay, I'll change that to wall pack.
Are you keeping the wall between both tenants when everything's done?
Yes.
Okay, got that note there, but there's another note. Demo the wall between. So the, if you could put a note on here, the date you got the variance for the parking?
Okay.
And the parking count, you have it.
Sixteen.
Right. Somewhere on here, it says per one hundred and forty square feet. So this makes it look like you need twenty-two, you've got the variance to allow sixteen where nineteen are required. I don't know where the one forty came from. So if you could look at the parking code and correct all this. So that it's showing that you needed the nineteen, but then you got the variance to go from nineteen to sixteen.
See, that's on L1, isn't it?
Yeah.
Can we take kind of a step back and Bill gives the board kind of a summary of what's changed since the last time we saw this, it was completely different. Now they've, the canopy has moved back and all of that, but the board hasn't seen all this yet.
Can't go back out front.
What we have, the second design, we attempted to do the four pumps. Uh, we just could not fit in the parking, we could not get the clearances, and that set of drawings that you had has been formally withdrawn for the four pumps.
Right, so can you just give a quick update on what you are proposing now, so the board is aware of everything?
Okay, um, let's go back to my new, basically, we're, we're proposing the signage changes, is what it amounts to. Okay.
And everything else is going back to what was previously approved?
Yes. Well, except for the back where we're adding the, the platform for the equipment. You wanted information on the channel lettering, I've got to meet with some signage people, I'm beginning to think, because the graphic, because it's graphic, if you blow up the font, it's a, it's a non-standard font, and I think the, uh, the, uh, the cost of manufacturing that non-standard font is going to be very expensive. And I was looking at, I'm going to talk to the signage people, and I'm thinking now that that sign, if we're permitted to do a box sign, I would like to do a cut metal lettering, and then we would take and get the coloration, take that portion of the sign, which is the lettering, and put that as the background for the box lettering. So basically, we would do a box sign of the same size.
So, is that sign in the window you're talking about, or the?
No, attached.
This is, this is the window sign, but I'm saying, up here, make our box sign with just the lettering, just the name lettering.
So if that were a box sign, this would have to be a box sign, because it's a multi-tenant building, so they're supposed to be the same design?
Okay.
Well, I will talk to them about how to manufacture it.
What is the other sign?
You have.
The other sign's a Senoko channel letter, like your typical individual let, channel letters, flush mounted.
Now, what's the, the green says what?
Says angry club. That's the second chicken tenant.
So, window signage?
Window signage, you're allowed twenty-five percent of it facing the road, this is within the dimensions.
Okay.
Clarity?
Yep. Um, so that works, the, the window sign works, this is channel letter, so the others should be channel letter as well. I think you had a detail of the.
Uh, it's on like A7. Yes, there's the.
So, since it's multi-tenant, they should be the same design, basically.
And so angry club says?
So I asked for like a, a cross-section of these channel letters, and that, what Bill's saying is that this font is not standard, so to get this manufactured, it's going to be a challenge, is what I'm hearing. So he was proposing to do this as a box sign, but can't really have a box sign and a channel letter on the same building.
Well, the other thing is, um, rather than a channel letter where the lighting is within the letter itself, uh, you can also do backlit, so if we could do a cutout metal letter with the lighting behind it onto the siding. Uh, I mean, it would look closer to a channel letter, but wouldn't necessarily be a channel letter.
The two need to be the same, the two sides need to be the same design.
And the multi-tenant sign, because.
Uh, we'll talk to Senoko, but I doubt very much that they have alternate signs.
Alright, so we need a little clarity on that.
On the signage.
Um, so my comment about the quantity of the monument signs was just cleaning it up in here, because it looks like from this that you have two monument signs? If, if both sides are the same?
Uh, yeah, if you. If you go to, uh, what I brought in this morning, I changed those.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Michelle.
Um, and Eric might already talked to you about this, but we need the multi-tenant sign plan, we want that pulled out of the main site plan, like as a standalone document.
As a separate plan?
Yeah.
For.
The tenant's site, yeah.
It helps us file it better, because the, this multi-tenant sign plan will go with basically the property. Also, I sent you those eleven points, that's, if you could pull out all of that information into a separate packet, kind of like how you did for the DOT, all the DOT specs, oh, I'll, I know that some of it's redundant, because you need the elevations in both. But if you could pull out everything that's required for the multi-tenant sign plan into a separate packet?
I think that's basically A5 through 7. Uh, I think that's really the only place that I'm doing any of the signage counts.
Sounds about right, so now you're, you're going to keep the existing monument sign, you're going to paint it?
Uh, those inserts there, the blue parts, those are basically, uh, plastic inserts within the frame, and just open up the door, pull out the red inserts, put in the blue inserts. Uh, the current plan, uh, the bottom sign is the changeable text, uh, and we will be adding in the middle a second changeable text. There are three panels on it now, the difference will be that it says Plaza on the top one, and then we have Unlighted and Diesel is the next two panels.
So you're, you're getting everything?
It's going away.
Okay. So to clarify, it can say Senoko Plaza, but you can't list the other tenets? Go back to the other drawing. Just zoom in on where you were for a second. Alright, so in your drawing, it's small, I know, but Senoko is not S E N O C O? Yes, there are a couple typos throughout. Alright, just, because it didn't, it didn't say the same thing on both, so. Um, yeah, there are, there are several typos. I'm not going to go through a point a lot, but there, there are several.
Okay, I think the big issue is the channel letters.
So the channel letters, yep, getting everything pulled out into a separate thing, um, getting your parking count table squared away, clarifying whether or not this wall is going to stay, uh, putting the date of the variance, clarifying what fixtures going on that HVAC porch. So this is the other change, is that this curb on the southern side of the site is going to stay now?
Yes. That was previously.
Uh.
It was approved as new.
It was approved as new.
Oh, okay.
So that's one thing I want to call out to the board, this, it was going to be a different design on the approved plan, so it was going to be new. So I was saying, go with what was on the approved plan.
Go to L1. Existing curb. New curb.
What point are you trying to make?
Uh, the, that it said existing curb, whatever the existing curb material was, um, I don't believe.
You put me to the.
You're saying on the approved plan, it's up there?
Do you want to see the approved plan, so we can all be on the same page? You have it by number in there, huh?
Oh, okay. I've got to change that. Apparently, I got a hold of one of my old files.
So what are you proposing?
I was proposing to go back to keep the existing curb on these changes. I will discuss it with the owner and we'll decide which way we want to go with the curbs when we present it.
Now, if you know, if you heard my comment on the previous project about stone curb versus granite? Are you proposing the stone as granite, because I've learned DOT specs allow for other types of stone other than granite?
I would have to go look at it, I cannot remember what the material actually is.
But I believe the.
We'll make a decision, but you're basically saying whether existing or new, it's got to be granite.
Yes. Correct. I mean, the proposed that you showed here that we previously approved, I think leaves it a little bit better.
Yeah, I actually think that it defines the traffic patterns and, and, uh, it gives me places to put the signs. Directional traffic patterns, makes it cleaner, um. If I've got to replace it, if the existing is not granite, then I guess we go with the approved on this drawing.
Okay, let's take a look at it. Hey, Mark, did you have a chance to look at that front sidewalk at all?
I, I did not.
Okay.
I didn't.
I'm still just confused by it a little bit, Bill.
Which?
The, how you're getting the four inch curb at the front.
Oh.
That's the one that we previously approved.
Yes. When they did this parking lot, the door threshold, basically what they did was, they paved this, and then when they got to this point, they added asphalt and they brought it up to four inches. Sidewalk, we're coming in, we're cutting the existing asphalt out, which will reveal the four inches of the sidewalk thickness, that's our curb. And basically, then we are coming in and just flattening to the sidewalk. And pouring the new sidewalk, if, uh.
So the blue hash area is repat, or past asphalt?
Yes.
And then you have a curb with a four inch lift?
Yeah.
I just don't understand the slope. I, I think they're removing the slope.
Yeah, we're taking, basically, I've got a parking lot, then they came up to the door threshold.
Up to the building, okay.
So cutting and putting the sidewalk in.
So it's not going to slope towards the building?
No.
Okay.
No, actually, the drainage, the entire site slopes from here down to there.
And that was previously approved, I just didn't have a good understanding of it, okay? What else have we got? Really, that the multi-tenant sign plan? I think we need further clarity on that.
I think we're okay with the canning.
Uh we're okay with the circulation, parking, the lighting. The wall sections? I don't know that I see any of those in there. I don't know that there are.
No, no wall sections, existing walls, we're putting the fake stone.
Yeah, I think we just wanna see those details, how you plan to do that. You know, it's part of the the checklist of items that we typically require. You know, how does that how does that cement board, water table, stone, what is the the base? Cuz if you're putting that veneer stone on, typically, you gotta hold it up six, eight inches, you can't bring it right down to grade, so what does that bottom wall look like? How are you managing all of that? That's what we're we're looking for with those wall sections is. Cause you're showing it down to grade right there, but that's not actually gonna be the way it is. That stone can't go to the grade. Can't even go right down to the concrete sidewalk.
I think probably the detail is or attach to the slab, go into the slab, and basically pour four-inch curb on the foundation to set the stone on.
Yeah. I mean, you have this stone that runs it runs all the way around the building?
Yes.
So you could just, you have a typical wall section, just shows all that stuff. Okay. So yeah, just take another look at those eleven things for the multi-tenant sign plan, I know it's a little, it's a bit much, but there is point three on there, the maximum square footage allowed per tenant from the code. And I I think you have the kind of the minimum dimensions?
Uh no, if you go to the uh up to A five in your notes. Uh no, we're on the old, we're on the approved plan, uh go to what I brought in this morning.
Okay, this this is it.
The current proposed.
Is what you brought in, but you brought in this this morning.
There, the red. That's the preliminary calculation, square footages.
So there's the maximum square footage allowed per tenant from the code. The maximum square footage height and width limitations per sign. And I see you have minimum minimum height, minimum width. So you you're showing what you're proposing, but it's kinda supposed to be compared to what the code allows. Which is a hundred and twenty, but it's further limited to ten percent of the sod and eighty percent of the sign bend. So from your calculations that you brought in this morning.
Well, and also the monument sign.
And the monument sign, and twenty square feet of monument sign is included in that one twenty. So it's just really comparing what the code allows to what you're proposing.
Okay.
It should all be on there. And there's a couple little notes at the bottom, a note that no wiring should be visible.
Yeah.
Just a little stuff like that, but I I think you have most of it now, it just needs to be brought together into one separate packet for the signage.
Well, um I'm just thinking that fabrication schedule is basically for the Sunoco people to put together their product. And I think probably it makes more sense to go back to uh the first elevation on A five so that you have references to the window numbers and the square footages and everything, you have it on one sheet. I think I'm gonna move all that to this.
I think having it on one sheet is is good, I think what he's looking for is we gotta pull it out for a separate sign, multi-tenant sign package, that information should be
It's a separate file.
in that file, all that information.
And I mean, some of it might need to be on both files.
There is some redundancy.
Right.
Yeah, which is fine, we just for our records, need to be able to access those multi-tenant packages easily in case something changes here.
Okay.
That's it?
Leave it. So.
Okay.
So yeah, I'm not I'm not gonna go through and like highlight all the typos, but if you could go through and.
I'm not very tight.
I appreciate it.
So at this point, before coming back to the board, we'd like to see all of these things addressed, um rather than kind of going with UCL.
I'm not sure. I'm really not sure that today's Tuesday, Thursday, that all of this, I mean, the signage.
It doesn't have to be by Thursday, I mean, just whenever you can get us everything. I assume it won't be by Thursday.
You may wanna shoot for the twenty-eighth?
Just to make sure it's all wrapped up.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Do you have any updates on the tank replacement?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
I have my thumb drive back as well.
Uh yep, will you check that, Julie?
Unless you wanna copy it.
Uh if you would just email it to me, like I guess.
Well, I mean, at this point, just.
Yeah, just, yeah, clean it all up, put it together in one packet.
These incremental changes are really confusing for us, so if you can just email everything, do a full submittal paper and paper copies on on Drive, that'd be great.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you.
Great news.
Any other applicants?
No.
Alright, at this point, I will close the work session. Pause, stop, record.
There we go.